We have one review item before us. It is now past 11 o'clock. Consequently, we as the commission need to determine whether we proceed at this time or we leave this till another night. What is the desire of the commission?
I think we can proceed, particularly given the people who've earnestly been waiting all of this time, receiving a civics lesson about how the planning commission hears other cases, and I admire their patience for sticking around this late as we do too frequently.
So I take it that's a yes. Okay, with that, let us proceed on development review permit 06-001, 1930 Stewart Street. And I'm not going to read all of this, but it has to do with the mobile home park, and we're going to hear all about it from our esteemed staff.
Thank you Chairman Pugh.
Just before we do that, any ex parte issues, communications?
Not really, but just for the record, I live about three quarters of a block west of the site on Delaware Avenue in a rented house, and walk by it frequently and walk around the park, but I joins it frequently.
And for my part-
I've never set foot on it, though, actually.
Well, for my part, I actually went by there at about 5:30 this afternoon, just to get a sense of what the place was like, and should also point out that my offices are located at Bergamot Station, which is less than 500 yards away, or 500 feet away, however, to get from my front door to there takes probably better part of a mile, so I don't consider that to be a conflict of interest, as I'm declaring it.
I would just add for the record that we looked at that issue with respect to both of you and determined that there was no conflict under the requirements of state law.
I did a drive through the project Monday afternoon and stopped and observed a number of the spaces that were impacted and where they were located, I think it was, I forget if it was 14 or not. Also, I did a visit to Village Trailer Park to compare and did a walkthrough on Village Trailer Park for the full thing, so I just want to disclose that.
Finally.
Here we go. Thank you Chairman Pugh. Scott Albright, Associate Planner. I'm going to have a PowerPoint presentation for you describing this particular project for a development review permit at the Mountain View Mobile Home Park at 1930 Stewart Street. Must disclose, after Jing's fabulous presentation, this one's going to be a little bit more low-tech, so I apologize. Kind of give you a brief. City of Santa Monica Housing Division is proposing this project for the Mountain View Mobile Home Park.
Housing Authority or Housing Division? Housing Authority, isn't it?
It's the Housing Division.
Not the Housing Authority? It's two separate things? Okay. No, I want to know. It's just come up three times.
Essentially, this slide right here gives you the components of this particular project. One of the critical issues here is the establishment of lot lines within the particular, within the mobile home park, identifying the 105 sites, individual pads. There also will be, proposed as part of this would be the installation of eight new mobile home units. Most of the existing infrastructure on-site will be upgraded, including the electrical, water sewer. The streets will be regraded and repaved to eliminate any ponding issues. I know there's some drainage issues within the park. On-site fire hydrants will be included, and also the addition of natural gas to the park. A portion of the park is currently served by some natural gas, but there are, the majority of the park is currently served by propane, a propane service. This kind of gives you an aerial perspective of the mobile home park in the upper left-hand corner. The site is approximately 4.75 acres in size. It is located within a district that's RMH, which is the mobile home district. It's located, or it's identified within the general plan for special office district, which is very specific in requiring the retention of mobile home parks, so that's very important to point that out. The park was developed approximately in 1949 and currently has 105 rent-controlled, not units, it's rent-controlled sites. I wanted to make sure that was very clear because the, most of them of the units are not necessarily owned by the Housing Division or by the city. They are owned by individual owners who just happen to have rent a portion of the park. One other very important thing to point out is that the city-owned mobile home parks are exempt from the provisions of Title 25 as per the California Administrative Code and the Health and Safety Code. That's important because a lot of the issues raised by some of the residents are concerning the Title 25 requirements. In the lower left-hand, or lower right-hand corner is a site plan showing the existing conditions of the mobile home park. What this also shows, and it probably doesn't come up very clearly, are some, there are approximately 151 parking spaces on-site currently. I want to make sure that you realize that a lot of these parking spaces are not recognized because they are located on, essentially areas that should be developed with mobile homes, so as development on individual sites, people have added additions, have taken away on-site parking adjacent to their units, people have obviously made some compromises and sought out parking wherever they can find it, so the proposal is for the addition of 105 sites as part of the project, parking sites, which includes also two additional visitor spaces. Just wanted to give you a brief photographic tour of the site and the existing conditions surrounding it. In the upper left-hand corner is a site on the opposite side of Stewart Street. These, actually, it's a stable, single-family neighborhood, although these two units that are indicated here or shown here are actually non-conforming multifamily apartment dwellings. The lower left-hand corner represents the actual frontage along Stewart Street toward the mobile home park, and the lower right-hand corner represents a photograph of the northern property line adjacent to Stewart Street Park. These three photographs represent, the lower left-hand corner is the entrance to, the primary entrance into the mobile home park. The upper, upper left-hand corner represents a photograph of essentially existing the A units and the B units, and then the lower corner represents the exit, it's a one-way exit onto Stewart Street, which is just opposite Virginia Avenue. Kind of moving within the park, the upper left-hand corner represents, that's the area where part of the proposal is the addition of a new fire road, interior fire road for public safety vehicles. That is the area that will be impacted by the addition of that new fire road. The lower left-hand corner is a shot of the existing development along, I believe that's the D and E units, and then the lower right-hand corner, the mobile home at the very end right here, is actually one that will be relocated for the purposes of providing additional fire, fire department or emergency vehicle access. That is in the lower, right there, so there will be a street cut through there for fire safety purposes, or emergency vehicle purposes, I should say. The upper left-hand corner is representative of where that additional fire access street will be punched through. The lower left-hand corner represents the emergency access gate that is currently existing within the park. And then finally, the pool picture is just the recreational facility that's available In your packet, you've got several maps, 11-by-17s, and we also gave you a full copy of the plan. It probably was fairly confusing because there was a lot of colors and there was just a lot of lines on there. What I intend to do is try to see if I can, you know, clarify it just a little bit for you. What this represents is the units that will be existing and will remain in place. There would be no relocation activity affecting these. There is approximately, I believe it's 36 or 37 of these units that will be remained. And again, these are primarily affecting, this is the X row right here, and most of these would be the E and G rows and some of the numerical spaces. These units represent those that will be relocated. There are approximately 36 of those. Again, most are along the exterior boundaries of the particular site and reflect the addition of the new streets. Some are moving very short distances, others are a little bit greater distance to accommodate these streets. The green units that represent here are the location of the proposed eight units that are associated with this particular project. The proposal is for a standard single-wide 12-by-36 unit to be placed on these particular units, or particular sites, excuse me.
Those would be new people, right?
New units.
But not necessarily new people?
Not necessarily. And finally, this plan also identifies 24 additional sites that will be, in the future, proposed with units. The rest of the plan represents, that we show here, represents 24 of the sites, and they're, again, showing a standard 12-by-36 unit.
Would those be new people and new units?
New units and potentially new people as well. And also, you know, people can choose to relocate their units to particular sites as well. Here's just an overall composite to kind of throw it at you and give you some bearing as to how the park will look at the build-out. This plan is kind of a jumbled here, but this is really the relocation plan for some of the units. Again, most of them will be intact, and most, I think the Housing Division staff will have percentages for you of how many will be, you know, moving between 1 and 5 feet or whatever, but a good majority are, you know, you'll see very small movement in the units. Again, it's to accommodate the property lines. One thing I also want to point out is, again, because Title 25 is not applicable to this particular park, however, the staff did utilize Title 25 in designing the park, because Title 25 represents the ultimate safety that the state mandates for mobile home parks, and it's felt to be appropriate that we should try to accommodate their standards as best we can. This map is very simple, just showing the proposed lot line layout for the interior of the park. One thing to also point out is that currently, the park does not have interior lot lines. Any lot lines are implied, meaning that they may have been utilized by a particular person in planting or building stuff, but there are currently no lot lines within the mobile home park. Staffmen within the report identified a couple areas of concern. This is a photograph of the Stewart Street frontage. Our concern was that, we wanted to make sure that the park integrates itself into the greater community. I know there's been discussions maybe internally within the park, amongst the park residents about a potential for maybe a perimeter wall along here to, you know, provide maybe a sense of security to the park. Staff's concern with that is that, you know, we want to make sure that the park is, you know, is perceived as being part of the overall community, and that if the wall is, like, is considered, you know, it would have an isolating effect, and that's not necessarily the direction we want to take with this particular mobile home park. And finally, I know there will be some, probably some concerns raised by residents of the park regarding the interior roadway and the impact that will have on residents. Of course, I'm going to leave you now with the question that was in your staff report. Do the proposed improvements to the mobile home park, particularly the reconfiguration of the park's layout promote appropriate principles of site design relative to location, size, massing and placement of roadways in units that minimize disruption to existing residents? Again, our staff recommended action is to approve development review permit 06-001, and of course approve the statement of official action. I also wanted to point out, we did receive a couple letters, and I know you've received copies of those from some residents. They have raised some concerns, and a lot of them are Title 25-related, and we can certainly address any of those, and also I think there's a concern of, at least I had a couple conversations with a person concerning some of the interior properties and the impact that that will have on, on some of the development that individuals have done with their individual units, such as landscaping, and how will the imposition of property lines and lot lines impact this landscaping that, you know, many, they've cared for this for very many, many years, and they just don't want to see it. So I understand that the park has some rules, and they've actually set a, they've included in their rule package some provisions to allow joint easements between property owners, so I think that's addressing that issue. Again, I know Housing Division will probably have some embellishment on some of this proposal, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, and-
Does the Housing Division want to make a presentation to us at this time?
Very sure.
Wait, do we have any questions for the planner at this time? Okay. I guess the Housing Division is up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Ron Barfield, I'm with the Housing Division. And to answer Commissioner Johnson's question, it is the Housing Division application, and within the Housing Division, there's two sections. There's what we call the production and preservation. Basically, that's lending money to nonprofits to build affordable housing, and then there's the Housing Authority. So both of those sections are under the Housing Division.
Thanks.
I'd like to, I just want to take a couple of minutes, two or three minutes, to provide a little overview and some additional information, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions instead of taking the full 15 minutes. Regarding the, some additional information regarding the housing composition of the park, there's approximately 80 occupied space, or 80 occupied units. Of that, there's 59 that are homeowners, that is, they own the mobile home and rent the space, and then there's about 21 renters. They're renting the unit from the City of, or the City of Santa Monica, and then also renting the space, too. Approximately 40% of those units are recreational vehicles or trailers, and that's certainly something we would like to encourage upgrades for, and that's one of the reasons we're asking for the additional eight units to be placed on there, and then I'll talk a little bit about further assistance we want to provide. Approximately 60%, the balance of mobile homes, about 48% of those are single-wide, and about 12% of those are double-wide. And regarding the income levels of the residents there, this is truly an affordable housing community, and that was one of the, one of the goals when the city purchased the park. Approximately 70% of the residents are low-income. So why do we want to establish these lot lines? Well, we certainly wanted to define the spaces. Right now, we need to define 105 required spaces. Rent Control says we need to have 105 spaces there, so we need to move on and be able to rent those spaces out. It's going to define the roadway widths, especially regarding emergency access. The, there are areas in there that we didn't have enough clear width, there were, there were concerns, there were incidents in the past where emergency vehicles were having a hard time getting through there. We, on a temporary basis, we've basically identified parking spaces, and we've enforced people not parking in the roadways so that emergency vehicles can get in there, but on a permanent basis, this is another reason for identifying this or moving forward with this plan. It's going to define parking spaces. Parking's tough. It's tight. It's a tight site, but at least we'll have designated parking spaces, and we did find two additional parking spaces, so there is four guest parking spaces instead of two parking spaces. We misnumbered the plan, so we do have two more additional spaces on there. It establishes defined setbacks for the structures, primarily for safety. Mobile homes can burn down in six minutes, so if you can't get emergency vehicles back there, and I, you know, we know we're impacting some individuals more than others because we're putting these emergency roads, these cut-throughs in there, but it's for the safety of all the residents in the park, and that's why we want to move forward with this, and the Fire Department basically approved the plan based on that. And when we have these lot lines, we get to do what we want to do, which is do the right thing for the residents there and do the upgrades. We're going to have, we're going to upgrade the water, unequal pressure throughout the park, we're going to upgrade the sewer, we're constantly repairing the sewer lines, the sewer lines are constantly backed up. We're talking about infrastructure that's 50 years old out there. We're going to have gas, there's only two rows that have natural gas, everybody else is on propane. Propane is extremely combustible, it's very unsafe, and it's expensive. People limit their showers because they, the hot water, they're using too much propane. Electricity, right now, we limit everybody to a 30-amp panel. That's not sufficient for a modern mobile home. Parks are designing their, the amperage to about 100 amps for spaces for mobile home parks. We'll add cable TV, telecommunications, so all the modern conveniences. We're going to have wider roadways, again, primarily for emergency vehicles and access. Landscaping, integrated streetscape landscaping throughout the park. Fire hydrants, we'll be adding two new fire hydrants in the park, again, for safety reasons. So what design criteria did we go into this with? Because we, obviously, we were sensitive to the needs of the residents, and we knew we'd be impacting people to get this 105 spaces on there. So we said, going into this, we said, let's keep the basic layout of the park, let's not start moving a lot of the things around. Let's keep the basic street system, except where we've improved it with emergency access. So, and let's improve it so that we basically use the Title 25 design standards so that we're hitting on all the health and safety things we need to do as a responsible owner. So how did that impact the residents or the mobile homes? I think Scott mentioned 36, 37, and I have about 38 units that we would be impacting with these movements, but 10 of those units are only going to move 1 to 2 feet. 13 of the units are only going to move 3 to 6 feet, and then 15 units are going to be moving more than 6 feet. Relocation assistance, the city's going to pay for relocating the mobile homes. If we pick them up and they fall apart, we've got to deal with it. We'll obviously be hiring consultants, doing inspections, getting the right people to move these units and working with the individuals to move the units. Beyond that, if there's temporary relocation assistance needed, then we take care of that. We have to do that just because of the funding we use for the park, so we're committed to assisting the residents in moving these units and doing the right thing. The other thing is, for the residents that are there, and we know some individuals are more impacted than others, that, and I've talked to some of the individuals and said, I'd be happy to put you at the top of the list to move you to another area within the park if there's an available space that fits your mobile home. We'll do that. We'll take care of you. We'll do that for you. And that's, that's true, and that would be consistent with anybody we talk to as far as the existing residents. Homeowner assistance, we have a rehabilitation program right now that assists mobile homes if they need to rehabilitate their mobile homes. Of course, we'd like to see everybody move up, upgrade their units to other recreational vehicles or trailers into a decent mobile home, and we'd like to assist in that. Another thing that we've talked to the Housing Commission about, and they've approved in concept, and we hope to move it forward to the City Council, we'd like to have a mobile home replacement program. That not only would assist the current residents who would like to upgrade their units, and of course, they have to be income-qualified, but it also would encourage renters possibly to be homeowners, so that we could end up with more homeownership in the park. So that's another thing we'd like to propose, and of course, Council would have to approve that. So in conclusion, we want to do the right thing as the property owner. We want to be responsible, and above all, we want to make sure that it's a safe park. We don't want to find out that because we didn't do these upgrades, we didn't increase the emergency access availability, that units burned down, like I said, in six minutes, and then the park, and if you can't get back there, you're going to have lots of, lots of issues. So with that, I'll sit down, and if you have any questions, we have our whole team here to answer any of the questions. Thank you.
One question?
Sure.
That's, as to the new units, if I understood the explanation, when it pick up, on the one hand, there's 105, there's approved 141, we're going to take the existing 90-something and add 11 spaces or something equals 105. Out of the 105, 24 of those could be brand-new manufactured housing. Do I have my numbers roughly correct?
Roughly, there'd be an opportunity for 24 new mobile homes to come in.
Now, the 24 new manufactured homes, these are not RVs and they're not trailers, these are manufactured homes?
We do not allow RVs or trailers to come in the park anymore.
Right. Those 24, are those open to other folks who are existing mobile home owners in, elsewhere in the city, I'm thinking Village Park in particular?
We haven't defined the criteria for accepting new applicants to the park, but first of all, we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure to accept any new residents. Right now, we're not accepting any new residents.
No, of course not, but I was just saying, of the 24, when everything's said and done, these were 20, the others that are quote-unquote "new" are basically relocations or upgrades of existing tenants, as I understand it. You said there was 30 plus another 30 something, and then this additional 24 is for what I'll call new residents?
Yes.
Potentially new residents.
Potentially new residents, yes.
And that's all I wanted to get straight, is that those would be for new residents, potentially for new residents of the park?
That, yes, that qualify.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Okay, a quick question. I noticed some references to potential Torca conversion of this. Is that just ancient history, or how does that figure in?
It's, it was a funding source. We used Torca funds and redevelopment funds to purchase the park and ongoing operations of the park. We've used funds, primarily redevelopment funds.
Okay, but it doesn't refer to an actual purchase of the park by the people who live there?
No, it was just funds that were used. It's ineligible, Torca funds were ineligible use, and that was used as part of the purchase.
Okay, thanks.
So my only question is, why would you want to change your maze that even Hampton Court would be jealous of? It was a rhetorical question. At this point, we have a number of chits before us, and if you would come up, we have Cheryl Dryman, Tom Roybal, and Phyllis Scott, and you have three minutes each.
My name is Cheryl Dryman, and I live at the mobile home park. I've lived there for 18 years, and I'm right in the front. I'm going to be moved. I'm concerned because my mobile home is 40 years old. It has sat in that spot for the whole time, and I don't think it's going to move. And I understand that there is funding to help replace, but I want to make sure that that happens, and I will not qualify for low-income housing help. I'm a teacher in the school district, and I make more than I can qualify for. And I also want to urge you to try to help people with their plants. I have several trees, fruit trees, that I've grown from babies, and roses, and I would sure hate to lose them. Thank you.
Thank you, and as I understand it, the city has indicated that they would replace or renovate or upgrade as necessary if there was difficulty moving that, and they will confirm that later on. Yes, Tom Roybal?
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman. My name's Tom Roybal, and I live at 1930 Stewart Street in the mobile home park, number I would, I heard this evening Ron speak about anyone wishing to have their coaches moved, and I would like to speak on behalf, on my own behalf, to indicate that I would be interested in having that, discussing with Ron, that my, that we can move my mobile home into another position. I'm the only mobile home that's in a corner or on a curve, and I'm kind of pinched on both sides, and I went to see Scott Albright this evening, and I saw the latest rendering of the position of the coaches in the park, and with the measurements that he had available, it's very evident that I don't, my variances will not comply with, or don't meet the Title 25 distances between one coach and another, so I just want to make it on, my appeal on record, that I would- So I just wanna make it on, my appeal on record, that I would like to discuss the possibility of moving my coach to an area in the park where I will be having a little more room. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. And I would like to thank Ron and the staff for their presentation, and I thought they did a wonderful job, and I'm encouraged with their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Phyllis Goff, and Carl Coaster, and Randy Wallberger.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Goff, and I live in Mountain View Mobile Home Park in E Row, and I've lived there for twenty-three years. We almost made it to resident ownership, that's what the TORCA was, and that happened in ninety-six, but it didn't go through. So we had the four million dollars that the city graciously given to us, but it didn't work out that way. Now, I've already sent a packet of information, and I hope some of you have had the chance to look at it, and I'm gonna try to make this fast. There's one thing that's happening in the park that I am opposed to. First of all, the city housing is buying up mobile homes in the park, and putting renters in them, some of them are our best mobile homes. I think that's a misuse of affordable housing money. The greatest thing about a mobile home park, and the reason I, after I sold my home, I went into apartments, and then I bought in the park, 'cause my sister was in there, is that it gives low-income people a chance to own a home. Pride of ownership is an important issue in life. And therefore, they've taken that away from a lot of people, because they have turned away people that wanted to buy the mobile homes in here and bought them themselves. I do, I think that is a misuse of affordable housing money. Then they turn the renters into them, and this, and I ask just what now do they wanna buy? They wanna spend money to buy new mobile homes to move in there? I think the new mobile homes should be something that the resident purchases with a loan program so that they can be owners. Every park that I've ever known, and when we did TORCA, we investigated a lot of parks, and the one thing they told us, don't make it a rental park. It has to be owners. They have to hire a full-time maintenance man to take care of these units now. So anyway, I just say that this is, this is something that I'm against, any more owners, any more mobile homes owned by the city. They went to the rent board and got thirty-six spaces off of rent control for parking, because for safety. There was five cars in D Row and a few in the back that needed it. They didn't need thirty-six, so now we have a parking lot, and what's gonna happen? People have two and three cars in there, what's gonna happen when they only can have one? That's another problem. And they wanted to go back and get more, but the rent board said no. Now, I wanna get to the new rules and the reconfiguration, which is the most important thing, in a way. They, they did their redesigning of the lots by a stroke of the pen. Now, they say the Title 25s, they're not under that, they don't have to abide by that, but that's true. But Title 25 is a state standard for mobile home parks, they have two codes, pre-sixty-one and later. So I'm just gonna say, they picked and chose what they wanted to take from Title 25. And the three-foot setback in the front and a three-foot setback in the back takes six feet off of a lot, and then they wanna take three feet off of it parallel. I don't think this is conducive to making a better park, making lot sizes smaller. And there's no safety reason, the roads in Title 25 say fifteen-foot wide, and I called a representative from Title 25, and I said, have you changed that? And they said, no, there is no setback from the street, period. And they, that's a, they go by safety issues. If that was a safety issue, they would've changed it a long time ago. So I hope you take a lot of time and review this, because this is not the best plan there could be for the park. Thank you.
My name's Carl Coaster, I have number fifty-six, nineteen thirty Stewart Street. They're gonna move my mobile home park, mobile home in the park to the fence, with virtually no space whatsoever I'll have. When I moved in there, I moved, bought this place because I had, my shared, I had a big walk-in shed on a cement slab with electricity, which I won't have anymore. I don't think that's fair.
Interesting.
I'm sorry, but why wouldn't you have electricity? They're completely redoing everything in the park.
No, no, I said, I have a big shed, a walk-in shed on a cement slab with electricity in it.
Oh, so you won't have?
But what I can see of the plan, they're gonna move my mobile home up against a fence, where when I go out my front door, I'll be walking right into the fence.
Oh, I see.
I'll have no space whatsoever, not even go out and have a barbecue, and I don't see no space for my shed. And if they were to move it, that, you know, it wouldn't be on a cement slab anymore, I'm sure, they probably wouldn't put electricity in it, which eighteen years ago, it was there when I bought it, and that was one of the reasons I bought this place.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you very much. Randy Wallberger, and I believe you have been given five minutes, as you have a couple of other people, Chris McLeod and Janet Minius dedicated their time to you, so five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much for hearing our issue, and I wanna thank the Housing Department very much for buying our park, saving us, retaining us, and trying to keep this mobile home park alive and healthy, because it truly is a poor person's paradise. We get along very well, we treat each other with respect, we can look out for each other's children, and because we are so tight as a community, we have very little crime, and I just think it's a wonderful place to live, and I really appreciate all the efforts the city has made to keep us around, because we, we think we have something to offer the community, because it's a stable environment for children to be raised in. You're probably looking at a petition, a copy of a petition that I got up, I only worked on it for two days, I've got forty-three, actually, the three were by somebody else. I could've gotten at least twenty more signatures. Apparently, we have seventy-six residents, I've got forty-three, so we have at least a majority right now that favor the upgrades. We, we all favor the upgrades, and we know that some people are gonna be inconvenienced, but I think it's the overwhelming opinion that we should go forward with this upgrade, because we wanna exist for another fifty-five years at least, we wanna turn this park over to our children. We think it's a wonderful way to live, and we wanna be here to see it go to our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cover Bill Smith, and Ken Ward.
Yeah, I'm one of those poor guys he was talking about.
Okay, can you give us your name and address?
Yeah, I'm Bill Smith, and I live at the D eleven, that's in the front row. And my concern is here, a few months ago, Mickey came, she was from the city, and told me that they were gonna move my mobile home back five foot, and, well, it's not a mobile home, it's a, it's a travel trailer, a small thirty-year-old travel trailer. Now, what I would like to know is, I wanna ask, maybe I ask, you're in charge of this, I just wondered, well, well, she told me that I would be, they're gonna move me back five foot, she told me that I would be able to have a bigger lot size, and I could buy another travel trailer and put it on this place. Can I ask you, will that be available for me to do that?
Unfortunately, it's sort of out of context and out of our jurisdiction, and I think that's something that unfortunately, you're gonna have to ask directly of the Housing Department.
Oh, okay.
Because we're dealing with planning and development issues, and while there are internal concerns, which we are willing to hear here, it's not something that we can answer, and it's not appropriate for the Housing Department to answer at this time. But please, proceed.
Well, that's about all, I just wanted to know if I was gonna, do you, okay, that's good enough, thanks a lot.
You're welcome, thank you for coming.
My name's Ken Ward, nineteen thirty Stewart, I'm the X fourteen, I'm one of the ones that are gonna have to go and relocate because of a road that the fire department says was not even necessary. I submitted some paperwork over the weekend, an email, I wanna go and apologize for the lineouts on the last page, I did send in a correction on it. I also sent a copy of the fire marshal's report, and also about the zoning administrator saying that the, any new mobile homes doesn't need to go through a development review, because it's, you're not changing the pad, you're just bringing in something new. So on this, first of all, I would go and deny the eight mobile homes, because that shouldn't be on here, because they're gonna set a bad precedence. I came at the Planning Commission back, several years back, if you notice, to go and put in a new unit, went all the way through, I lost out on the deal, it's probably about thirty thousand dollars of that I've lost because of, I'll stress it, gains playing, and what it cost me, in legal fees and losing the two-story. On this, right here, this is from before the city owned the park, this is when Ramona Treffinger, the previous owner, had it. You can see all those rooms, the first, the first two rows, AMB never had parking. When you moved in here, you knew what you had. I had three choices to go move in. I first was gonna come back over here and back, and I said, no, I don't want that one. Then I was gonna come on over across from the office, and I didn't want that one. I finally found what really, what really I wanted, what really made me happy, what made me feel good, twenty, over twenty-one years ago, and that's this space, and it means a little bit more to me, and it's personal, so I really don't wanna get into it. But as you notice, we never had a problem with parking, we never had a problem with fire hazards or with roads, we were pre-sixty-one. This was great, this was a community, we were always together. Then there was a lawsuit, Ramona Treffinger sued the city of Santa Monica. To settle the lawsuit, they bought the park, and there's a little bit more into it, but that was basically it. The city bought the park to settle the lawsuit. So we go from there, and this is basically the diagram, well, sorry, let me go into rent control. They went to rent control saying, oh, we need parking, we need more, we have to remove housing for parking. That was horrible, I protested at that. And here you can see, as you...
I'll give you a moment or two to finish off, so be succinct, please.
Thank you. So you can see that they were allowed to remove thirty-six units, and what did they do? They went more than that, and now they have to come back up to the hundred and five. I would ask, why did you remove them in the first place? And the last one is the map itself, where I'm at. I am right here. Well, why is the road only gonna come over to one lane, when if they're gonna do it, they should go all the way back to the fire road? But they don't, and then why aren't they straightening out these other units? To make it, because you don't need this wide turn if you're gonna make a road. Nothing really makes sense. And there again, I refer back to the fire marshal's letter, he talks nothing about that road, he only wants to go and remove G eleven down here, so they would come this way. There's still enough room, and for the twenty-one years there, the fire department's been in there, the police been in there, and they, I've seen it, there's been no problems. And since the Housing Department has taken over, we now have graffiti there, we have, like, gangs in there. So, I mean, I would really kinda question this, and there is graffiti still there now. If you go in the park, you'll see it.
Excuse me, that's beyond our purview, so, and that's your, your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, one last thing, the infrastructure, I want done right away, they can do that, water, gas, electric, they need it, we need it, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I guess the Housing Department is the, is the client here, so applicant, so please.
What I'd like to do, if it's okay with the Commission, is just answer any of your questions instead of trying to rebut any of the commentary.
Then quickly, why is the road going just one spot and not all the way?
If you, could we get the plan up? If you look at the plan, when, we had our conversations with the fire department, our civil engineers here tonight too, and could talk about this in more detail, they, the concern was that the trucks couldn't get in by where Mr. Ward's unit is, and they had a hard time turning around, I think it was E one, getting around the corner of E one, G one, G one. And so, they, in that conversation, our civil engineer designed the road to cut through there to provide access, and then they also required, in that letter that Mr. Ward mentioned, that G eleven be removed too, to provide that access. So if you look at the overall plan, you can see that we have an ingress and egress at the north end and at the south end.
The bottom line, you don't need to go any further straight ahead, you have ingress and egress all around.
The, well, if the cut through wasn't there, the, where it says proposed new street, then, first of all, the fire trucks have a hard time getting around that corner, that's their commentary, and then you have to go around the whole row and then go back out. If there's an emergency going back there and another emergency vehicle needs to get out, you have that street blocked. Again, if, if mobile homes burn in six minutes and you can't, you have blockage in the streets there, we wanted to improve the emergency access. One thing that wasn't mentioned is, yes, there's a letter there that mentions the conditions from the fire department to approve that, but what wasn't mentioned is, there's two plans in the fire department's file, one was dated a few days after the other day, and I know Scott has copies of those plans, and it shows that proposed street on there, and that's how the fire department approved the plan on moving forward.
So my logic is telling me you didn't need to go straight ahead with a street, that this configuration is just fine for fire purposes?
This is the modified one.
Well, the one that he's, the one that, that's being presented to us, is the one that is...
Yes.
It's just fine for the fire department purposes, they don't need to make a street go any other direction. I understand.
As the plan's proposed, that they're...
Thank you.
They're good with that.
Commissioner Don?
A couple of things. Uh...
I'm sorry.
There are two things that strike me here. One is, is there comparability when people are moving from one location to another? At least one person's testimony seemed to indicate that there is not comparability. So I'd like to know how that was addressed. And then, my other question is, since there seems to be confusion or lack of understanding on the part of some of the residents, why is that? Were there meetings with residents? Do they understand what is being done, either by having met in groups or individually? Or what happened, and what didn't happen?
Okay. On the first question, as far as comparability of the lot size, our civil engineer here is Larry, and he can speak more to what he went through in the design, but certainly, the lot size needed to accommodate the relocation. And in this case, the gentleman in fifty-six, the, basically, the street's going through where his, his space was, and he was moved up against the north property line against the park. But as you can see, his mobile home fits on that space, so, and Larry can talk more about that as far as the design criteria he went through. the design criteria he went through. And on the second question, yes, there were meetings. In fact, we hired a relocation specialist who moved onsite and talked to those people that were going to be impacted by the move. She actually moved onsite, set up appointments. She was there. We had a meeting to say she was there, go talk to her, so you understand, you know, the impact on your mobile home or your location.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the first question again, the person who spoke indicated that he actually had more. He had a shed. So was it comparable but not the same amount of space, or what? There's a discrepancy here that I'd like to understand.
I'd like to ask Larry McDermott, our civil engineer, to come up and address that.
Thank you.
My name's Lawrence McDermott, civil engineer, land planner. My address, one eight oh seven five La Venta, Marietta, California. And in that particular case, if I could just back up a little bit to the access road for fire purposes, the...besides being advantageous for the fire trucks to go around there, it also provides a better layout for the utility phasing in that if you didn't have that street there, you'd be jockeying all over with the infrastructure. This makes it easier to phase. And we also were utilizing the existing parking spaces across from that space, G one in the middle. So long as they were there, we decided to maintain them. And I personally, when I was out there, a fire truck was trying to make the maneuver. It was sort of a demonstration. And to make the turn around at G one, they had to stop, back up, and turn. And this is much, much better. You know, we're giving two fire hydrants instead of one, but getting back to space, I believe it's fifty-six, I think, as I went out and inspected every one, that if you notice, this takes up more area than any other home in the park. And I think that the storage facility was underneath the awning. I could be wrong. It's possible that there was an external storage that may have thought belonged to a different lot, but I don't think so. And it's something we very possibly could work out if that's the case. There's no intention to short him on anything. And it was very, very difficult to maintain a hundred and five spaces without, you know, a little bit of sacrifice here and there. I know that Mr. Ward is one of the ones that got probably less than he had before, though everything fits on his space. If we could go with a hundred and four spaces, why there'd be no problem. But there's nowhere...this plan is so tight that it's just very, very difficult.
Okay, so what you're saying is that those attempts were made, but it couldn't be a hundred percent because of how everything had to fit?
Well, I thought we made it a hundred percent, but a hundred percent of the people weren't going to be happy.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
And if there was some oversight on a storage bin or something, that we still could work that out, I'm sure.
Okay, but basically, the living spaces have the comparability, and efforts were made to...for people to be able to maintain what they had in the original space.
Absolutely. And just one more thing. The lady's right, the front yard setback is zero, and the units that are moving just a small portion are mostly on the perimeter as because they did not have the required Title Twenty-five. We'll go back to that separation from the property line, so we had to pull them forward for safety purposes so you could get around them. There were only a few spaces internally that did not have six-foot separation. And there's two rules with Title Twenty-five. That's you need three foot to the setback, to the lot line with the unit, and six-foot separation. So a lot of these lot lines, they only can be in one place, and yet I know there's some places that because of landscaping, some people feel that they have five feet and the other person has one. But I understand that they're going to let them do some type of paperwork easements. And the other thing I wanted to mention escapes my memory for the moment.
While you're thinking of that, I know that Commissioner Clark had a question.
Just a quick question. So the...most of these streets, drives, whatever you want to call them, are intended to be one-way in terms of the circulation?
Yes.
Although I bet that at least one of those arrows must really need to point in the other direction, because otherwise everyone's going to end up in the lower right corner and not quite know where to go.
I always leave one thing on the plan for the planning to...and I do know the arrow you're talking about.
So which one turns around, just out of curiosity?
I believe it's one-way going out to Virginia, if I'm in the right spot.
Okay.
What's a little deceptive about this plan is, in fact, even though the property line kicks up, the driveway goes across, so you must have an easement from...
No, actually, what you don't see, or what isn't clear, is there is a portion of Virginia right-of-way that's beyond their property that they use.
I see, yes, that you connect into. Okay, yes. Because I saw that in my final plans.
Oh, and then the other thing I do remember, it was a case that the zero lot line had no effect on the front, the zero front setback had no effect on relocation. We did not move any coaches because of a zero not having a three-foot front. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to address them.
This time for you. I don't believe that we do have that. Just out of my personal curiosity, is the city encouraging homeownership in this park?
As I mentioned, we have discussed at the Housing Commission as far as coming up what we're calling a mobile home replacement program. So yes, we would encourage homeownership, not only for the renters, but also an opportunity to...for any existing residents to...that are homeowners to upgrade their units to, as long as...
And new residents potentially also would be able to bring a unit in, own a unit?
Well, we'd have standards for the new units to come in, and then we would have to basically think through how we might want to assist them as far as loans or whatever. Again, something we need to take to council and see if they would approve that.
But what you're saying, I guess, is that as a city, you're open to the idea, you just haven't developed all of the...
Most definitely.
Yes.
We want to upgrade not only the physical infrastructure, but we'd also like to assist the residents and any new residents coming in so that we have a mobile home park.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley?
Yeah, I have a question. Just you...you...the owners are still renting the pad, right, the site?
Yes, all the pads or spaces are rented.
Rented, yeah.
And that's the rent control part of the equation.
Right. And Ken, is it possible, I think the one gentleman mentioned, he wanted to rent a pad adjacent to his or a site adjacent, and can you do it? Can you do that and put a double wide on that?
Well, the site's so tight, getting a hundred and five spaces in there is the...we don't have extra spaces, extra lots.
But could somebody rent two spaces and push the units together to do that?
Uh...
You know, I have them for, but then, right?
You know, I think our first response would be, we want to provide more affordable units or more affordable rents, and providing somebody two spaces just doesn't seem to be the right approach.
Okay, thanks.
So I believe at this time, it's before us. Commissioners, any thoughts, considerations, ideas, proposals, motions?
Yes, I would move that we adopt staff recommendation, go further with a terrific project, that we should compliment everyone involved in the Housing Department and the Housing Division and the Housing Authority, and the Housing Housing, that they should all be very proud of our project, and the people who live there should be very thrilled that they're getting all these upgrades and basically saving people's lives. Because I'm familiar in Village, which is just a few blocks away, someone took their own life about a month or so ago out of concern of the future of that particular park. I can't say why they took it. I'm just saying, it happened. So people's lives are dramatically impacted. This is a terrific project, and full steam ahead, and congratulations to everyone involved. We should be proud as a city of being able to save this project.
Second, and I want to comment that, yes, there are still imperfections, but this has been a long time coming, and a lot of work has gone into it, and some of those imperfections will be smoothed out as well.
So roll call.
Michener Brown?
Yes.
Michener Clark?
Yes.
Michener Dodd?
Yes.
Michener Johnson?
Yes.
Michener Cunnitt?
Yes.
Chair Pugh?
Yes. And emotional response from somebody?
So moved.
Second.
Michener Cunnitt?
Yes.
Michener Johnson?
Yes.
Michener Dodd?
Yes.
Michener Clark?
Yes.
Michener Brown?
Yes.
Chair Pugh?
Yes.
All right. Thank you to everyone. We're very lucky. So we've, I think, come to almost the end here. We have our standard discussion for input, discussion, and possible action on policies, process, materials, and timeline. And just, I guess, speaking out loud here, there are a number of organizations that I've been approaching, the hospitals and also the Visitors Bureau. I had indicated to them that September might be a doable date, and it sounds like we might...
October would be much better.
Okay. I think they might actually prefer that, so I think that's all I have on that. Anybody else have any items relative?
Question to Commissioner Clark. He looked on the item...two items ago on the agenda, we were talking about the historical house being used as a, let's say, combined development, for lack of a better phrase. In this discussion, do you want to explain at least some conceptual direction that should be considered?
I think, wouldn't we not make that a future item?
Well, I don't know if it's part...is it not part of ten A of the land use update?
I think...
It's not just a blue discussion item. It would be something that should be, in my mind, looked at carefully by the update the land use element, this whole concept of preserving our existing historical.
I think probably the best way to go with it is, it's been something in the air as we talk about ways of changing the way we develop existing neighborhoods, and to try to keep that fresh in mind as we address that in the land use element update stuff. I don't know if...I don't know if...not to talk about, you know, certainly not to talk about now, but I mean, is it worth agendizing as a separate topic, or will we get to it as part of the land use element discussion about residential?
Normally, we would, but you know how these things go. Someone prepares things and presents it before us. And I suspect we're going to have a big chapter on historical landmarks such as so, and they're going to have another massive area talking about land use development, zoning, development criteria, and the two will never have a chapter that matched the two together.
It's a real concern. Maybe that just as memo to staff that we have...
It's an issue that the Landmarks Commission has been very involved and has made a number of recommendations, and has been paying a lot of attention to the entire land use and circulation element process and the zoning ordinance issues as they come up. So I don't think this is going to be an issue that's going to not merge in with all the land use policies that we're working on. It's an issue that's very much at the forefront. So that being said, I don't know if it's worth the Commission having further discussion at this time. It's certainly going to be an important issue that's going to come forward when we get to that level of detail in the project.
I think it definitely fits in two things that I've mentioned before in various circumstances. One is, it's not just about isolated landmarks, but it's about the overall historic fabric.
Yes.
Number one. And number two, to have a, you know, a lowered by right threshold and then discretionary approval as a way of incenting things like this that we would like to do. And, you know, because we have talked about that before.
It's a combination, which is I...
And so, anyway, just as a reminder, we want to keep this front and center. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for...
I'm satisfied if you're satisfied. Why are you being skeptical?
For the moment.
I don't believe we have any written communications at this time apart from the Planning Commission case list and future Commissioner agenda items. We've kind of maybe merged that with number ten.
Actually, I actually have two that don't have to do with number ten.
Okay.
One is for the Commission to discuss, and I would hope...I hope this could be in September, when we're going to have some of the traffic people here anyhow, to discuss intersection signage, traffic signals. There's some specifics there that I think we'll get input from other commissioners on, but I certainly have some specifics. And the other item is to discuss requesting of the City Council the reinstatement of the design compatibility review process.
Is that a future work in the future?
Yeah.
I would like to add one discussion item, and that is, it's twelve o'clock now, and then last meeting we left at eight, and we scheduled an ARB appeal hearing that was sort of two and a half months away. And if I understand correctly, it's a small business on Wilshire. I think we need to look at how we carry out our meetings and perhaps hear some development review things on some of the nights that we know we have a short agenda on the development, I mean, the policy hearings. I think making somebody delay somebody two and a half months for an ARB appeal, I don't think that's quite right.
Right. So we're not discussing it now, but we'll agendize that for discussion.
Right. So soon, I hope.
Yes, I saw that. So I think at this point with, well, let's see, the public's gone. Well, I guess we don't have any input from them, so we are hereby adjourned. Well, I guess we don't have any input from them, so we are hereby adjourned.
Adjourned.